Yeah, we're good. Okay. All right, now we're on. So this is a special meeting of the Nowland City Council. It's Monday, September 30th, 2024, and it's eight o'clock PM. And this is to discuss a follow-up. Last week, the city council majority decided or moved to proceed with a posting for a part-time fire chief. Subsequent to that, there's been some conversations between staff and the attorney and the League of Minnesota Cities as to how that process should go. And so we're here to talk about how that process should go and what it would look like going forward. In talking with the League, it sounded like there were some questions about exempt. There were some questions about process. And if we started over with a change in position, that the recommendation would be to start over with a new posting. And their recommendations would be if we were changing that, we should stop the current process. As the council has reevaluated need for a full-time chief, the attorney would need to advise us as to what that meant if anybody in the the two candidates that are there right now are veterans, what that would mean. And so if we were to stop that process and start anew. And so one of the options I was looking at was if we started a new process, we'd post potentially for an interim candidate. And for the attorney to determine what the veteran's status would be if that were the case.
Mr. Mayor?
Senator Bob.
If the, it's the will of the council to engage an interim fire chief on a short-term basis, a temporary basis. First question, that always is, do you have to comply with the veteran's preference? Because if you have to comply with the veteran's preference, you're going to have to go through a formal process. It's the same as if you were hiring a full-time, regular fire chief. There is two potential exceptions to the veteran's preference for this type of a position. One is that veteran's preference does not apply to department heads. And there is an eight-factor test that the Supreme Court of Minnesota has put in place to tell, you know, for us to apply whether somebody is a department head or not, and whether they're subject to veteran's preference. In a, in this, in that case, the League takes one position, looking at it. I looked at it a little bit differently. And the League is taking a much more conservative approach. They're saying if they person, one of the factors is they have to be able to hire and fire. And I look at the case, and I don't see that as elements that you have to include every single one of them. The case is saying, these are the factors. You have to show that primarily this is the job description. That being, so the League and I kind of depart a little bit. I had a discussion with the League Human Resources Department today about that. But one thing I don't think the League is looking at in saying that even in a interim position, we have to follow veteran's preference, which would negate the benefit of that, is that there is case law for an exemption for a temporary position. So is a, so given the fact that there is a exception for temporary position for veteran's preference, if the city council wished to retain someone on an interim basis for a defined period of time, then they would not need to follow through with the veteran's preference on that position, that interim position. The courts have said, though, that if you are using that as sort of a subterfuge, in other words, you keep reappointing the person to keep putting that person back in place. And in cases that I've seen, that was like a five-year period where they reappointed somebody every single year to the same interim position, the court said, no, that's, you now have to follow the veteran's preference. So you do have the right to engage an interim fire chief if that's the will of the council.
In that, one of the reasons for looking interim is because the council still has not resolved what a part-time position versus a full-time position would truly engage. And so the opportunity for a interim would be to get somebody qualified in, to position quickly. And, and a part of that is, you know, the top item on your list, on your packet there was the email we got two weeks ago from Administrator Lainer from Chief Schmidt. And here we are in fourth quarter, starts tomorrow. And there's a dozen or more items that, that everybody's been informed now will fall onto the captains. We have one captain who's been a captain for a long time, and another one who just was appointed, I believe, in August. And so I believe these came up because these are probably all things that the chief has been doing this year. And I recognize many of them, I'm not sure if all of them are what's been done throughout this past year. But needless to say, these are things somebody will have to respond to. The idea is that an experienced person on an interim basis, like we had when Frank came in, could, could step in quickly and handle these things and take that load off of the captains very quickly. In addition, we have a job description that we all received last week. And I know it was short notice last week, but everyone's had a chance to look at it over the past week. I'm recommending some slight modifications to that full-time job description on things that probably aren't pressing or haven't been pressing, certainly in, in the past two years, that we've added, if we had a full-time chief, we would like them to do. So I would like to be able to go through that with the council to see if that, that's a reasonable job description should the council decide we're going to post for an interim chief's position. And if the council decides that that would be something we're going to proceed on, then I have some specifics as to what that would look like. There were some concerns in the email that was sent out from Administrator Lainer from the League regarding para, regarding the, what was para and the, let's see. Actually, overtime issues in para. With the, something we didn't discuss when, when I was looking at it, at a full-time position. If the fire chief also serves as a firefighter, how does that affect the para contributions? Because as the administrator, there's, there's one para category, and then there's the statewide volunteer fire para. And so those people that have dual responsibilities have to separate that, similar to what we do in Public Works here now, where there's certain para contributions separate from the fire department para contributions. And then obviously, if they're serving in dual roles, what would the pay structure be? So we have some options there that would, would, should address both of those. But again, that would be, need to be something researched by our attorney here to make sure that's. The League can only tell you what they think, para can only tell you what they think, and they leave it to your attorney to do the research on that. So obviously, there's quite a list of things that somebody needs to be doing very quickly. And right now, as Dave's email says, as of tomorrow, this all goes to the captains. So the sooner we resolve something here, the better. Would the council like to see modifications to the job descriptions as I recommend it? If you've got them in front of you, redlined or struck out?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raino.
So these two items are from you as of today?
Yes.
Okay. So it's our first chance to look at them?
Yep.
Is that information in the back?
Yes, it is.
For a final, Mr. Mayor?
There's just one copy I've got on my desk.
Convenient?
So, Mr. Mayor, before we go through this, I guess I'd like to get some clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
So your red is a change?
The, the red is an addition. And the strikeout is in black.
On the first one, the Nowland Fire Department job, fire chief job description, under nature of work, towards the end of the second sentence, the font color changes. And I'm wondering if that means anything?
That, that font color change is, is on the email that I received from the administrator. So just, that's just the way it's copied.
So was there any change, I mean, without having, looking at my phone to go back and forth and back and forth?
No, the, the only changes would be in red or strikeouts. And so if there's a font color change, there was something with the email that we got.
It was just the difference between the systems?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Then in the second page of that, the one, two, three, four, sixth bullet point down, who is going to provide those, who's going to be responsible for that? The oversee direct, maintain safety programs for the city, et cetera, et cetera.
Same people are doing that. The fire chief does not go through, again, safety coordinator for advising all departments within the city to minimize safety risk, provide training, implementation of safety standards for OSHA policies. That's, that's never been a fire department thing. That's why we have SafeAssure, and that's why we have internal training. But that's never been the fire chief's responsibility to advise all departments on, on safety standards.
Then why was it in, so it was in the original full-time one, though, right?
Yeah. I, I would say there's probably some things in here that maybe were helpful in, in looking to have a full-time position. You know, if we're going to add responsibilities. And I think it goes back to, and again, I, I know it was stated that this was never anything but a full-time position, but, but we do have documents. In fact, almost a year to the date from this came out, September 13th last year, where it was, one of the options was part-time chief, part-time something else. And that might have been where some of this came in, to say if there's something else they're doing, they're adding safety protocol in other areas of the city other than fire. And again, we, we expanded to a, you'll see some of this in here, but to a fire marshal, where we're going to go out and inspect buildings and, and things we've never done before. Maybe larger cities do, but we haven't incorporated that yet. So kind of to a point we had back in the discussion, budget discussions. Are we adding something new or are we replacing something that's already been done? So I'm looking at the first sheet, saying, here's things that the chief is saying are being done and need to be picked up. These others are maybe expansions on that.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raino.
So then, under fire marshal also?
Yes.
So that is something we just won't, who are we going to rely on to do that work if we have a part-time?
Okay, so as I was just stating, that we have not had a fire marshal in, in our history. We do not have an inspection program inspecting commercial industrial multiple-family structures. There is a statement in here about investigating involvement in fire investigations. But from a fire marshal's standpoint, it's covered either in other responsibilities delineated here by the bullet points. But at this point, from an interim standpoint, on a temporary basis, that my recommendation is we not expand to what we're doing to include fire marshal, but that's certainly up to the council. You see, in the next one, the, go ahead.
And so the duty is typically assigned to a fire chief, will not be assigned to a fire chief. Because myself not included, council has decided to go down to part-time. So those things that we've talked about that would give, be given, we would then be, we would then have with a full-time fire chief, unless we, we won't have these things.
No, this, this is from an interim standpoint.
But a, but an interim, part-time, but if we stay with part-time, we stay?
That's, that's up to the council when they decide what to do on a permanent basis. And, and part of the discussion we had last time is, we don't truly know. You know, we're, we're looking at call volumes that are significantly less than, than in other cities that we have comparable job descriptions on. We don't know until somebody's doing this. The discussion last time, is this a 10-hour-a-week job? Is this a 20, a 30? So part of the advantage of having an interim in here is, is you can find out pretty quick. A person can keep up or they can't. And then when the council makes a full-time decision or a permanent decision on full-time or part-time, they will have actual evidence to back it up rather than speculation as to how detailed this is.
So, Mr. Mayor, council's already decided they want to go to part-time. So when you say the council will decide go full-time or part-time, they've already made that decision. So unless, and, and again, it, it's been a full-time discussion since day one, and not till the 11th hour have we decided to do a part-time. There was some discussion, nothing was ever brought forward. And so now here on a, basically October 1st, we're looking at trying to revamp.
And, and I, I know that, that continues to be said. Even when we have an email from the chief saying otherwise. So I, I guess that, that does surprise me that when he said, here are three options, and one of them was full-time, one of them, the earliest discussion was a full-time position with part-time fire chief, part-time something else would attract the widest range of candidates from outside the city. And we're looking for a wider attraction. It was like, bring somebody in so they know they have a full-time position. It may not be all fire department. We just have to figure out what else that is going to be.
And, Mr. Mayor?
And that's been the question that's come up repeatedly, is, is what does the second part of that job look like? And that was as, as late as the summer, we were having that same discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
So, Mr. Mayor, are you speaking to this that you gave us last time without a date, without who it's from? That we've never seen it before? And the second of the last paragraph sec says, the second and likely best option would be to consider paid full-time fire chief slash emergency manager and other duties as assigned. I'm just, is that what you're saying, that that's where you're getting where we should be doing?
That is, that is from Chief Schmidt on September 13th, 2023. And I thought I had copies of that here, but.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Brian?
Can, can I suggest that we, since the council has already decided twice we want to go ahead with the part-time fire chief, that we can continue to move forward in that direction? So we're trying not to go back and, and discuss issues that have been reworked so that we can come to a conclusion and get this issue, get this, continue to keep this process moving forward in a timely manner?
I would welcome that, yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Alders?
So our last motion was to post the position part-time per week. And then work with the attorney to understand, can we move the two candidates that are at whatever stage we called it, if they were interested in a part-time position, to move them into the pool for this new role? And where is that at?
Mr. Mayor? In that situation, the way I understood, because I haven't been at your meetings, but it was to basically say that the two final candidates that were from the full-time vetting process would automatically be considered for the part-time position.
Yep.
My problem with that, as I explained to the city administrator, is that that may end up in a lawsuit. Because think, think, look at it from this point of view. Somebody that was already been vetted, already thought that they were a finalist, now all of a sudden, and, and the question, and this is why I kind of came and suggested to have this meeting, was because if you change the process in some fashion, you have different people that are inter, let me, let me explain my, my position. If you have different people doing the interviews, different questions you ask, anything that changes in the process when you process and vet the part-time versus what you did in the full-time, it's not apples to apples. So my recommendation was to start, advise these candidates that we are now moving to a part-time position, that's the will of the council, then have them reapply and go through the formal process again. And I'd have to send them a letter, but I also have to tell them what the process is, and that's kind of the next step here.
So we're going to start over. And so now the proposal is, we could start over, but.
Have an interim to?
Like Mary has said, it is October 1st. So the next proposal in front of us is, do we want to consider an interim spot before that process starts over with target date of X?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raino.
To Mr. Rupi. So if we decide to go interim position, what is the process that we have to follow for posting, interviewing the, I can't think of the name of it, Matt McAllister?
Martin McAllister.
Martin McAllister, testing, you know, what is the process that we must use? Is it the same as hiring a permanent employee?
No, it's not the same process. Because it's not, you don't have to factor in the veteran's preference. The veteran's preference is statutory, there's prescriptions that we have to follow. It's my understanding, even though I wasn't part of that, that you did follow that when you were vetting the full-time candidates. But now that you are moving towards a part-time, that still has to be followed, all the statutory requirements for veteran's preference for a new permanent part-time position. But with regard to the discussion that was brought forth tonight by the mayor about having an interim, since that is a temporary position, not permanent, the case law and statute has said that veteran's preference doesn't apply. So you, you will create your own process for what you, how you want to engage that interim administrat, or interim, I'm sorry, I'm so used to that, interim fire chief. If that's the will of the council.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raino.
The council member, Rupi. So other than, because it's interim, we don't have to, veteran's preference isn't an issue for us. Are there legalities that we have to, are you saying that we can make up our own process for bringing in an interim? Or do we need to follow some type of process that's stated?
I think you can make up your own process. In other words, I think that you have a lot more discretion in who you hire on an interim basis. And it happens, think of it just like, for example, when you retain the services of Frank Boils as an interim administrator. And in that situation, if I remember right, you contacted the League. The League had some people that were available from an ongoing list that they maintain. And I don't know if you interviewed Frank or Mr. Boils or not, but you engaged his services. And we, and that's the same sort of process you'd be doing here. And I believe the reason that the courts look at this a little bit differently is they want to see the continuation of government. You know, same thing like administrator, you're head of department. Here, this person's head of the fire department, you need to keep having somebody available in the interim. That doesn't mean that that person then could be considered like permanent without going through the formal process where you would have to follow all veteran's preference.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Do we have some sort of an idea how long we are entertaining the idea of having a interim fire chief before? Do we have any kind of idea of when we might have something in place where we can start moving towards the permanent?
The recommendation I would have would be a six-month period. We've got a three-month period here where our current chief is, is advising in an advisory role. So there'd be an opportunity to download whatever the chief can in three months to this person. And there will be a new council, at least one new person on this council, and, and likely two, and maybe three. And so I would recommend getting through this year as staple and get everything we can from Chief Schmidt. And, and then continue as needed into the coming years so the new council can, can determine what they would like to do going forward. And have that transition period there so that this person could then, if they were a candidate, if they were a viable candidate, could apply for it, or they could then transition to whatever the council at that time decided to do. So my recommendation would be to target a six-month window.
Thank you.
And when I was doing research on interims, typically they say six to 12 months is. And as, as Mr. Rupi was saying, you know, there are situations where interims just keep getting rolled over year after year. And at that point, it's like, now you, you're not really looking interim, you're just looking to avoid, you know, benefits.
Does, does, Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Sir?
Does the League, I didn't look myself, does the League have a stable of folks that would fit this role? Do we know?
Do not know.
Okay.
That was something that I believe another council member was looking into, and I didn't, I've never contacted that person on that, so.
Thank you.
But their, their recommendation, they, you know, when I talked to them, they didn't indicate that. They just said, you probably want to put up a short-term posting and find out who is interested because the conditions have changed somewhat, so.
Gotcha.
And that was the recommendation of formally close down the current process and start a new one and move through that as quickly as possible. Any other questions on the job description?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Brian?
So as I understand it, right now, our emergency manager is the current, is the current chief?
He is, correct.
I would, I would like to at least continue to have those responsibilities, stay with our interim chief.
I think by, by contract, you know, you can correct this, but he's, he's serving in that role through the end of the year.
The, I was, I was reading something, which role, advisory role?
No, the emergency management. He's, he continues to be the emergency manager.
No, that, not that it would stay with Chief Schmidt, it would, it would be part of this job description.
Oh, it is part of this job description.
You have questions, you have marks in the red at the end, and I just wanted to clarify.
So, so the, the marks I had there is, again, from an interim standpoint, I would say we can, we can ask whatever we want. Previously, the ma, the maintenance of the operation plan was with our clerk treasurer. And once that plan's up and running, the maintenance was, was located here. The emergency resource manual, those would be documents that we don't, we didn't have a place in the fire station for those previously, so we always maintained them there. That's why it was a question mark, do we want to continue to have that currently housed in the administrator's office? We're just updating them right now, but the, the current version of it is in the administrator's office. The coordination of the duties with the city administration in order to effectively respond to emergency situations would be this person's responsibility. And then maintaining and monitoring all the emergency warning sirens to ensure adequate coverage in case of emergency. We only have one siren, if it's not covering, it's, it's all dependent on the wind. The winds come to south, you'll hear it in the north, and if it's from the north, you hear it in the south, and, and not the other. But I, so I don't know that in an interim basis, we're overly concerned with sirens because that's. But as far as the, the two others, we can keep it all with this person and just give him a spot to house those documents. Or we can keep them with the administrator, either way. That's why it's a question mark. Other questions on the job description? Go to the last page, you can see the, the proposal would be, this position would be, as stated on the front, flexible 20 to 30 hours, for our discussion last time. If they can do it in 10, great, if they can do it in 30, great. But the average target would be 20 hours, but 20 to 30 hours flexible. And the, the pay proposed would be 855. And the pay proposed would be $855 per week, October through December 31st, 2024, which would equate to a $44,460 annually, which again is consistent with what we were offering previously. And then as of January 1st, the state, and that would be for an exempt position. The state is raising their minimum annual salary, or the second time in two years. We went from about $36,000 a year, and now it's going to be $58,800. So in order to be exempt, you have to make at least $59, $58,800. So my recommendation is the second half of this interim would be $1,150 per week, January 1st through February 28th, due to the state mandate to consider exempt being over $58,000. And that would equate to $59,800, still well within the budget we planned for this.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Rainville.
The pages aren't numbered, so it's the second page of the required knowledge, skills, and abilities, both under competent, must start at the top, minimum requirements. So we're going to reduce the requirements for this person compared to what we originally asked for with a job, with a, with our posting?
That is correct. That's my recommendation. In talking with, with various fire chiefs, it made sense for a full-time position and the extra duties that you were looking at here, from a part-time position to require the associate's degree in fire science and technology, in the terms of at least one of them was a bit of a stretch. It's probably standard practice, they said, in full-time positions, but part-time and interim, that would not be necessary if they have the other skill set. And again, I'm just talking to-
But we don't have anything, but we don't have anything to back that up.
Nope.
Right, so it's just, all right.
Nope.
So we're being asked to accept things that we really don't have any info on. So then down under compensation and other, same thing with the additional information. So we're removing the probationary periods, I get that. So are, do we have the ability to do a performance review of this person that may be here with us six months if we find in three months they're not cutting the mustard? What do we have here to be able to say, you're not cutting the mustard, you gotta go? I mean, I, with the full-time or even, you know, we, we had the increase after 120-day probationary, increase after 12 months with annual review, and annually after their, thereafter, excuse me. We don't have anything in here that gives us the ability to say, we don't believe you're performing to what it was you were requesting to do when we hired you.
Is that something that maybe the attorney can offer language that would cover your concerns there?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Rainville.
I would hope he could.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I'm waiting on the attorney here.
No. Yes, I'm assuming, Councilmember Rainville, that you're, you're talking about whatever employment contract is negotiated with this interim fire chief that's being proposed, that we would, we could include language that would allow for reviews and allow for, in a sense, you know, termination. I would have to, I would suggest that you do the reviews. And, and I would also suggest that, you know, if, if you are looking at potentially letting the person go, because they are in the government employ, there is certain notice requirements that you do need to follow. And there is certain things, I think it's called Lottlemill hearings, that you have to give them a notice. So we could put some sort of language in there. But my understanding is the main concern is the ability to have some sort of a review periodically? Or is it a specific time point?
I'm just raising, Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Rainville.
I'm just raising the question because I don't see it in here, so I don't know how council feels on it. I think we should have a three-month review if our city administrator, who this person will be reporting to, sees something glaring prior to that, that that be brought to council, and a discussion can be had.
Yeah, certainly, I think to the attorney's comment there, that would be part of the contract. So there would be identifying that, should there be anything glaring, that the administrator would bring it to council. There would be a three-month, and obviously, at six months, hopefully there'd be a decision on the permanent position here, so.
Can I ask?
I think that could be-
May I ask a question? In this proposal, would it be potentially overlap? So that if you go through the process and you hire a full-time, part-time fire chief, would that person overlap with this fire chief? In other words, in the contract, would it have an automatic, maybe not, I don't know, termination of the position upon the appointment of a full-time? Or are you looking at, maybe that person, maybe is no longer the chief, but is a person that stays on in some sort of advisory role, or, you know?
You know, I, I think that, you know, if, if they're a qualified firefighter, there's a couple of options. Stay on, like we have right now with Chief Schmidt, where he's in an advisory role for a period of time, he or she. That they could stay on in the department in another capacity, if that was appropriate, if they were a qualified firefighter and it was valuable to staffing. Or if they're officer caliber and the chief would like to retain them as an officer, I'd like to have that, that option. And if they turn out to be really good at what they're doing, and they would be a good fit on a part-time, permanent basis, that they wouldn't be excluded from that either.
Mr. Mayor?
Robert?
Just another, another question. Part of bullet point under minimum requirements that was referenced to before, AASS degree in fire science and technology, is that your intent to also remove at least five years of paid on-call fire department experience? Or is that just to remove that first portion of the bullet point?
My intention was just the first portion.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Rainville.
So if we have this intern, March 31st comes around, and we choose to then not hire them, that that would then be put back into the requirement for a permanent fire chief?
That certainly would be the-
And I haven't finished. And if the person we bring in as an interim can't, isn't qualified under what you have removed here?
They're excluded.
Yeah, they're excluded from, so then they-
Are they excluded?
Yeah, they're excluded from hiring, or applying for the position then?
I would say that's up to the council at that time. I'm, I'm not, I'm not binding the hands of future councils, saying, you have to add this back in because we took it out for the interim. Like I'm saying, from, from a limited number of chiefs I've talked to, they're saying on a part-time position, that would be a bit of a reach, it'd be nice to have, but wouldn't be necessary in their opinion. But that'll be the council at that time that makes that decision. Because they'll be making the decision on, on whatever the full or part-time permanent position is, they'll be posting that and defining that, so. This, this would bind them one way or the other.
So, Mr. Mayor, go ahead, Jason.
So, Mr. Mayor, we can move it, you can move it to a desirable versus a minimum requirement?
Yeah.
Or something like that?
Mr. Mayor, unless I heard you wrong, which is very possible, you, you again said full-time, part-time, so, so let me finish. So... People know I'm in favor of a full-time fire, fire chief. This full-time, part-time, where we keep co-mingling them, and, and I don't think that's fair, because council chose to go full, part-time. Now, if there's a new, new full council, January 1, they could choose to go back to full-time. I don't, I just... I, I don't like the thought of reducing the requirements for somebody that's gonna come in and be our fire chief, whether it's interim, full-time, or part-time. We agreed last time that we would leave the requirements as-is. And that would be my preference, to leave the requirements as-in. We wanted somebody that could step in, do it, and now we're saying, well, maybe you don't quite need to have all of that. And that just doesn't, doesn't sit well with me, but I'm only one vote, so.
And, and obviously, there were things we didn't know last week that, that had come to our attention through the attorney and through the league, and through some further conversations with others in the industry. It's, it's a matter of opinion, and I apologize if I'm offering confusion by saying, future councils may decide to go full-time. Part of what I said is, we'll have a much better understanding after somebody's serving in a part-time role, what it takes to do that effectively. And, and they may say, based on that, we continue, just like we are with a part-time chief. Future council may decide, it's not working as effectively as they'd like, and they'd like to revamp this and say, we want more out of this position, and here's specifically more that we would like. But at this point, yes, we are talking about what the council agreed on last week, to go to a part-time position, but in, in, to expedite these, transferring of these roles to a chief from the captains, my proposal is an interim while the council figures out what it's gonna do long-term. Like I say, with, with the transition's gonna, we'll know in just over a month what that transition is, and, and then they can start planning accordingly, so.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I just got a couple of things I want to make sure I'm clear on. So if we're under contract with St. Francis till the end of the year, and this potential person could be here January through March, is there any plans for any coaching, mentoring, any of that kind of stuff, from March to Jan-, or from January till March? My other question would be, I'm just gonna give them, you can pick them however you want. Can we, I know you talked about possibly waiting for the new council, but I would just encourage just to consider trying to have something in place at the end of December or first thing in January, because this process takes months to be able to find somebody, as I'm fully aware of. And I just don't want us to wait till March, and then all of a sudden we start trying to do something there. And then lastly, under that page we were on, where Councilmember Rainville was talking about compensation, is that total compensation, so there'll be no additional pay for responding to calls? Am I reading that correctly?
That is my recommendation.
Okay.
And part of that is because of the two separate pair plans, and, and the need to come up with two separate pay, pay scales, and then identifying, tracking the hours. Whereas if you have an exempt position, if you meet, we certainly meet the duty, the conditions of an exempt, and this would, this would put us in the current minimum requirement for wage.
Right.
And then after January, put us in the new state mandate.
Gotcha.
So that way, we would expect that they'd be putting in 20 hours, but they could put in 40 hours, if there's big fires or whatever it is they've-
All for that wage that we're recommending there?
Correct.
Gotcha, okay.
I've, I've found one other city that has a separate, they pay very little on the chief's side, way under the minimum, which I don't know how they're getting away with that. But it's exempt position, but they also pay, paid on-call, and so they have to separate if they're in the pair system, they have to separate those, and then have to come up and agree upon wage. This way eliminates all that, so.
Okay. How about my question on January to March?
So January to March, you know, I, I think that it's, it's pretty clear from your conversations with St. Francis, they're done to 31st. The expectation would be that in these, what's left of this year, that Dave does, Chief Schmidt does all the coaching and mentoring and possible in that time, and then this person would either demonstrate that they're qualified in this position, or, or be doing that mentoring to whoever the council brings in. And to your point, doing something right, or yes, I wouldn't expect to wait till three months and then say, actually, I think I had, February, it should be March, you're right. That they would be in that process, training at that time, so. It'd hopefully be an overlap there.
Oh, I, I got you, okay, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Not an overlap from this, this person in this position, not from St. Francis.
Right, yep, I caught that, I had to think about it for a second, but I got you, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Rainville.
Okay, so, under compensation, I just want to get that clear. So through the end of this year, it's $855 a week, no matter if they work 20 or 30 or 40 hours.
Correct.
Okay, so, at 20 hours, it's $42.75 an hour.
Yep.
It's 30 hours, it's $28.50 an hour. I'm gonna work the 20. And if I don't get my work done, I don't get my work done, but I've made more money. January 1 to March 25th, or February of '25, at 20 hours, it's $57.50. 30 hours, it's 38.33. And I could be wrong on my math, I'm not a math wizard. So if anybody wants to check that on their phone, I'd appreciate it. Again, I'm gonna work the 20 hours, and not the 30, and make more money, and if my work doesn't get done, my work doesn't get done. A flat fee for an unknown amount of hours. I'm gonna work the least amount of hours I can to get that bigger check, or that bigger... I'm gonna work less hours to make that $855. So I, I just, I would hope people wouldn't do that, but it's an incentive of work less and gain more.
That is, that is, you hope you have the, the candidate that says, I'm doing the work to get it done, and if this is what they know they're coming in. And again, council's free to adjust that, I'm just saying, these are the minimums necessary to meet the exempt qualifications. Council certainly can, can offer more than that.
And, Mr. Mayor?
That's my, that was my starting point, we had to at least meet the minimums to qualify for exempt. Councilwoman Rainville?
Well, Mr. Mayor, just seeing this for the first time tonight, it's, again, I'm trying to do my math, I'm not a math wizard. We did get the information from the league on Tuesday, the 24th, but I just, you know, I, again, I'm-
Mr. Mayor?
Scott?
I hate to be this guy, but I just want to make sure that I got things straight here. So are we going to require this individual to live within a certain area? To get maximum efficiency out of that position for those hours? And so, I'm sorry, did you want to answer that first? Go ahead.
I, I think it, it would be most beneficial in evaluating candidates, if they were in response area, to be able to respond. Because that was one of the questions we had last time, was if they're living 20 miles away, and they're not in the city during their 20 hours, are they going to respond to calls?
Right.
So I, I would think that the best situation for the city would be if somebody was in the response area and could respond, even when they weren't in the city on their 20-hour.
But are we gonna require-
Somebody living here, or working here, or within the response time.
But if you're-
Are we gonna require it? Again-
Are you just going to see how it plays out?
I see, and I think we take a look at the candidates we get.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, that's a desirable qualification?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, you can't, I agree with Councilmember Alders, that would have to be listed under desirable, because you can't have them apply and then say, oh, you didn't, you know, lived too far away.
So, desirable qualification lives in response area?
That's fair. Is that right? Not for me to say, sorry.
Lives or works?
Yes. Lives, works in the response area. And then, Mr. Mayor, I mean, I think Mary has a, she has a valid concern. If we're doing this for six months, it'll also give us a good feel for if somebody is working the 20 hours a week and when Scott has a kind of a, hey, how's it going at 20 hours a week, it's getting done or it's not getting done, that gives us a better idea of what we probably truly need, right? Because I, I agree with the mayor that ideally you have a candidate, if it's like, okay, we're going to get the job done, and if that takes 22 or 25, I can see that happening. If it's 40 every week, I don't see that happening, you know, past the first month or whatever. But that should give us a better feel for, in spite of what Alders thought last fall, this is more than a 20-hour role. And we do need, here's the data that we have that we're going to reevaluate in six months.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
And I asked, I agree with Councilmember Alders. The other thing we looked, you know, when we looked at what was given to us at whatever meeting it was, the 17th, I think it was, and it had the job descriptions, there were only job descriptions from cities somewhat like us that were part-time. We never got any feedback from any municipalities that are like us that have full-time firefighters or fire chiefs. And so I, we made a decision on a part-time, but really did not have full information on it. But the limited hours will tell us if it's a gap or not.
It's going to tell you a story, right?
I just have a hard time believing that with a young department and the things that we truly need to get done, that part-time's going to cut it. And if you went full-time, that does not mean you can't go back to part-time if you find that. It is, now that it's up and running and everything's going good and it takes less time, you can revert back. I've worked in government and have been in many departments that, based on technology changes, based on assignments going, you know, duties as assigned goes to other departments, that they can go from full-time back to, back to part-time. So, it's not like that's not a possibility. Again, but I'm.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Brian?
Do you have some sort of, like, timeline for that, if we went ahead with the interim, where, that, how things would play out between now and getting someone in place?
All right. So, my recommendation would be like we talked about last week, we post it. As soon as Bob gives the okay, I'd like to, as the league said, they would recommend keeping up as short a time as you can. They said three days, I said that's a bit much. But my, depending on what Bob's approval would be, I would say, post it if we could tomorrow and end of day October 7th, which would be Monday, a week from today. Same criteria we had last week. My suggestion is if there's three or more candidates, we, the chief, the administrator, and Councilmember Brian and myself would screen the candidates to get them down to the final candidates. If it's three or less, that we would send them to the council to be interviewed and selected. And if the timeline of October 7th was realistic, then I would suggest that council either meet on October 10th.
I'm out of town.
You're out of town?
Yep. I'm not canceling this one.
I've got something on the 15th, a work session.
We had an organizational chart meeting.
Okay. So, we have, Monday, the 14th is not an official holiday anymore. And you're back in town on the 14th?
Mr. Mayor, are you wanting me at that meeting?
It'd be nice, but it's not, it's not required.
Okay. So, right now, I'm planning on being out of town the 14th and 15th, back on the 16th.
Okay.
But if I'm not required, then don't need to take my calendar in the queue. But just so I'm clear, Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
Did I hear the process is going to be, we're going to get together as a team and we're going to, we're going to vet out the candidates, and then those candidates will come for interviews to the whole council? Did I hear that correctly?
No.
Okay. What did I miss?
I said if it's more than three candidates, that would be the case.
Okay.
If it's three candidates, like we had going into this final, we had three candidates and one of them got bumped out, but we would have been bringing three candidates to the councils.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Alders?
Can we push to do it on the 8th?
We can.
And just have that as part of the agenda?
Mr. Mayor?
Natalie?
That won't make the packet if we're posting it until the 7th.
It wouldn't have.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
You essentially have had an interim chief in the form of Dave Schmidt for three and a half years, and he has advised the council that he thinks a full-time position is necessary. So, you are talking about implementing another interim chief for six months so that they can advise the council whether or not it should be a part-time or full-time position. But you've had an exceptionally qualified individual with a lifetime generational industry experience who has given you advice that you guys have spit in the face of and said, we don't want it. So, why are you going down this road? The optics of this is laughable, both internally from the fire department.
Okay, thank you. You've made your point clear last week, and I understand it's a council decision. And I understand you said last week, when I asked for fire department input, you said, why? You don't need fire department input. So, thank you, but it's a tough enough decision as it is. We have been operating on a interim basis.
Correct.
And we've been told it's fine. So, again, it's a tough decision, but we are looking at, the details are in front of us, and we have to make that decision. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
Scott started first.
Yeah, I called on you, though.
I lost my train of thought, but I, I agree with Mr. Schultz. We've had this interim, now we're going to do interim again. Had we stayed on our path of full-time, as we have discussed from day one, we wouldn't be here.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. And as Councilmember Alders has said, you know, we have made a decision, and we can keep going back. But at this point, how do we go forward? Scott, you want to say something else?
Yes, please. Thank you. This is my second question, the second part I had earlier. I think, if I heard you correctly, Mr. Mayor, you said that you, you had some concerns or had some conversations about para for this position?
Yes.
Okay. And did you say that the interim fire chief would get para?
They would get para, and they would get E S S T.
Okay. I'm going to have to go back and look. I don't know interim employee if they qualify for para.
That was, that was my question to the league.
Okay.
And they said, but have your attorney check it out.
Put that on your list, boy. Because I don't, I could be wrong, but I just want to make sure that we're.
Because that was, that was my question, para and E S S T.
Or interim.
Yep.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Does that make this person an employee or contracted? Because we talked about a contract earlier, which would be.
They would be an employee with a contract, I believe.
Yeah. It would be an employee with a contract.
Okay. Because that's not how we did it with Mr. Boiles.
I'm sorry?
That's not how we did it with Mr. Boiles? So, I just wanted to make sure it was correct?
No, we had a contract.
He was saying he wasn't, he was an employee.
But he was not listed as an employee. We did not take tax.
Because he also did work for other communities, also other things. Well, he's, then he qualifies as an independent contractor. If you are working for more than one in a professional capacity, like myself, I'm an independent contractor, because I work with you, I work with a bunch of other communities and towns, I'm not working just for you. So, it's, it's difficult, but each time you have to look at it a case-by-case basis.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
To Ms. Johnson and Mr. Ruby, what if the perfect candidate also works for three other municipalities?
Then potentially, they could be an independent contractor. They have their own. And again, if they have their own company, like I have mine, I mean, you have to look on it and like each situation on a case-by-case basis. Do they have their own company? Are they putting themselves out as a professional management company for, like, being a fire chief? Where they get contracted with this company and this, you know, like myself, I contract with you. I had a contract, I haven't had one in years, but I had one, and I put myself out there as, I'm as an independent contractor. You had one with Shane Nelson, your engineer, and Sidney Nash, your planner. So, again, in all of these situations, it's on a case-by-case basis. And it's what facts are presented, and then we make a decision. They're either going to be an independent contractor or they would be an employee.
Okay.
For the most part, most people, if they're not working for other communities, they're going to be considered an employee.
I just trying to get clarification.
So, Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Alders? August 8th isn't going to work? Is it August 14th, or, excuse me, October 14th? Is that the next available day for everyone? Scott, you're not here, then?
I'm out of town the 14th to 15th, right?
So, is it the 17th? Does that work for Mary?
Yes.
Jeff? Yeah. Scott?
I'm looking right now, sir. Yes, I can make the evening of the 17th work, yes.
So, 6:30 to 17th?
That is M E A.
I don't, I don't, I would, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
To Mr. Schultz, M E A is not.
Does it work for this team?
Yeah, it's not, we aren't obligated to not have a meeting on M E A. I know it's, people are out of town, I get that. But we can't do it on holidays or election nights, things like that, as far as meetings. But M E A isn't one of those times we can't have one.
Just point it out.
Yep.
So, are we still considering the 17th? Or were we saying no?
I'm booking it.
What time did you say that? I was going to ask you.
6:30.
6:30? And that's strictly interviewing candidates in front of the council, correct?
Yep, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
So, just so I have it clear, so, applications will be open through October 7th. What is the next step?
If there's three or less, they're scheduled for the 17th, starting at 6:30.
I'm sorry, you said if there's three of us?
Three, three or less candidates, three or fewer.
Three or less, okay. They come, all of them come to the council?
Correct. If there are more than that, then they would be screened by the hiring committee of the chief, the administrator, Councilmember Brian, and Mayor Pilon.
So, when do we see those interviews? Are that getting together, then, Mr. Mayor?
That will have to decide after Monday, close the business, and then we can decide that at the Tuesday council meeting.
And Mr. Ru, Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Mr. Ruby, you're going to have all the information we need to be able to post?
Yes.
It's a pretty short window for you, it sounds like.
Well, it's, at this point, you're, okay, I just want to make sure. I'm, let me make sure I'm on the same page.
I'm right there with you.
You are now, so I will be writing a letter to you, I'll have to get this information from you, Scott.
Yes, sir.
But I'll be writing a letter to your two full-time candidates to inform them that this city council is going in a different direction. They are no longer offering a full-time fire chief position. That the council's will is to hire an interim chief for the next six months. And at some point in time in the future, undetermined, you will be going, at least at present, you'll be going and looking for a, going through the process to retain a part-time fire chief. But that, there is no decision on when that process will begin at this point in time.
Well, Mr. Mayor?
Have you finished that, Tom?
Yes. Okay.
So, if we, we're going to hire this person for six months, should we not have a plan going forward? Are we leaving that then for the new, whoever is in elected office, January 1? As far as what to do at the end of the March 31st?
And at this point, I would say yes.
And then another question I have is, is there any interest in discussion by the council to make any changes to the hiring committee, which is currently now fire chief, city attorney, Councilmember Brian, and Mayor Pilon?
City administrator.
City administrator, oh, I'm sorry, city, yeah. No, I, I met Scott when I said it, so. So, the council has had any thought about making any changes to that hiring committee?
Hearing none?
Mr. Mayor? Mary, would you want to be part of it?
I would be happy to.
So, add Mary?
Lovely open meeting. It's so much easier in business to get things done.
Mr. Mayor, knowing the expediency of this event and knowing that it is more difficult for me to be available the day, I'll withdraw the hiring committee so that we can get this moving forward and done.
All right. So, if it's more than three, the Councilmember Brian's withdrawing and Councilmember Rainville would step in? Is that the council's wishes?
Yes. Sure.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I'm not gonna let Bob off the hot seat yet. The job write-up, I wanna be clear on what job write-up is council hopefully providing to us to be able to get it posted as quickly as you're looking to get it posted. I just wanna make sure we're, we're doing what we're being asked to do with the right job write-up. It's not the one we posted last time and took it back down. So there's a modification, right? Okay. And that is a great question because that's on my list here as well. Because I wrote them all out to try and, if, if you guys are doing a scheduling for a part, you know, part-time or full-time, how are you going, are we gonna get there? Is this the job description that the council wishes to have posted for this interim position? And if there's, if there are any changes to this interim job description, fire chief job description, I'd like to know about it. Or is it acceptable as presented by the mayor?
You're looking at what we got tonight?
Yes.
Is that what you're reflecting?
Okay. That's in writing, it's presented to you, it's, it's easy to, it's better to see stuff in writing than it is to try and talk about it in general terms.
I think if you got the, you noticed that it's, the February 28th date was on, it should be March 31st on the last page?
Could you say that? I'm not seeing that last page of this. So this, I'm sorry, so this-
That's all part of that, you know.
This goes with, okay, I'm sorry, it was two separate handouts. So this goes with this, okay. And yes, I have that from March 31st.
And then you picked up the desirables.
I have the, under desirables, lives and works within the response area. What do you consider to be the response area? Is there a geographic area, so much miles from the city hall or the fire station? How many minutes to commute? I mean, what, what is your standard?
That I'd have to check for sure.
Mr. Mayor?
Scott?
May I ask somebody in the audience what that is? Cause I think he may have the answer for us that we've been utilizing. Mr. Schultz, do you remember what the designated work area is for response time? If you don't, that's okay, we can look it up. I just, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. If you don't know, you don't know.
There is a radius, I believe that it's, it's a 10-minute radius. Uh, it's, it's-
It's time, it's, it's time, not miles.
I believe it's, I believe it's time, not miles. It's 10 or 12 minutes, I believe. Which probably translates into a six or seven mile radius, probably no more than 10. You know?
What's the will of the council? I need to put something in. Is it within a 10, live with and work within a 10-mile radius?
I think that would be reasonable, in a reasonable situation. You have another, you have another individual that could possibly talk to that?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
Do you want me to podium? So, jury strike, 19070 Lithium Street. I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna speak to help. I have a lot of opinions on this because I've been part of it since-
Can we keep it to the radius?
Uh, no, I wanted to talk about how to help.
Okay, that's, the radius is the only question right now.
Then you can look up the, the League of Minnesota City Council, I have that answer.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I believe, also, I think it would be in everyone's best interest to make it very clear, to add in the compensation section that there'd be no additional compensation, no open per in, something to the effect of no paid on-call compensation. Just because different people have different policies, and we'd like to be very clear with people. And again, absent obtaining any other information from the city, I think that lives and, uh, something to the effect of lives and works within a 10-mile radius of the city fire hall. I think that's what you're talking about. How fast can somebody respond? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Raydell.
Given now that it's 36 square miles, I would think we'd say 10 miles from our borders. Because if you're gonna take 36 square miles and you're gonna, part of that's already gonna be chewed up. And-
From borders, you're saying?
Yes, that'd be my preference.
I, I do have a comment on that, and I'll stick to your word question.
Thank you.
You're, you're asking for an administrative person to manage a fire department. And no matter how many duties we could list on here, some of these I actually wrote, you're gonna cut the time in half. I wouldn't have a response plan. This isn't a firefighter you're looking for. You're looking for someone to get you to the next step. All right? If you go to 10 miles, you're gonna get a volunteer captive or something like that who, who's not gonna have the experience of a fire chief. So for the greater good of our community, go find someone who knows what they're doing quickly and start to hire people within the department so we don't have to keep hiring humans. Train the people in the department to do the job.
All right, anything else, Bob?
Yes, I still need to know. Exactly, and then this, the level is in the details. I need to know what your direction is with regard to response time. Do you want to have response time in there? Do you wanna leave it out? Do you want a specific miles, a specific number of minutes? From what, you know, what is it that I'm supposed to make sure is in here by tomorrow?
Leave it out.
Who, uh, who asked for the response time to be in there?
There has been discussion-
Councilwoman Raydell, was that you? Cause it wasn't in there.
We talked about it earlier, so.
It's, that's why I'm asking the question. I'm confused. It's not you guys-
We can leave it out.
You can, okay.
Desirable anyways.
It can be desire, I mean, we said to move it to, if we wanted some response time in there, we said to move it towards desirable, so.
It is in the desirable category. But if you are saying that, people may, it may, if you put that in the desirable category, it may limit the number of candidates you get applying for the job. That's what you're looking for.
So leave it out.
Okay. And can I ask, who, Jeff, Mr. Mayor, did you, did you prepare? Do you have this? Will you could email this over?
I could, yes.
Yeah, that would be helpful because if you want me to make changes and get this in final form to give it over to Scott, I'll be happy to do that. And I'll be happy to take a look at interim employees get para and E S S T. My guess, E S S T is a mandate. It doesn't really make any differentiation between, it's based on the number of hours worked is what I recall. It's a new statute, I haven't really worked at it with it that much. But if I remember right, off the top of my head, it was based on number of hours worked. So they may well qualify for E S S T. Para, that has their own requirements, and I have to go look that up. I don't know that off the top of my head.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Brian.
For Attorney Ruby, that was, that was included in a, part of the email from the league saying that, that had to be considered. So I think that's where the discussion's going off.
Sure, yeah, and that's, and if, and based on the information that I obtained from that, I have your blessing to add that in the compensation area.
Yes.
Okay. And then, is there some document that is going to be put together with this job description that you guys have used in the past, or you have it about, you know, the timeline for what applications do? I haven't seen any of the packet that you guys have used historically already. And what documents do you have? And can you provide that? And then, do you want, what information, in addition to a job description, do you want to have as part of this?
I, I'm not certain what was, off the top of my head, what was posted the first time, so. If there was background information given on the city or? Do you know, Scott?
Uh, I'd have to look, but I don't believe so. I think it was just a job description that we posted up there.
And was there any document that told people how to apply, where to submit applications, deadlines for submitting applications, when the interviews would be, you know, the basic things that we've been discussing here tonight?
Yeah, so there was a posting that was added to it. I can get you that information if you want.
That would be great, if you want, if it was, if it, if I'm being tasked with putting this packet together, I'd like to see what you have already. Why reinvent the wheel? Okay.
All right, so with that, the understanding is you, using the template we had before, basically, you'd put it together, end of business, October 7th. Interviews to be conducted on the 17th.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Brian.
So, at least the current plan would be then, if the, regardless of how many candidates there are, if there's more than three, they would have to be vetted by the 17th. And then that all the rest of the remaining interviews would be, all the, the three remaining interviews would be done on the 17th? Is that correct? Okay, just making sure. And, Mr. Mayor, on the 17th, we'll have like a interview packet, questions, so that we can have the same questions for all the candidates?
Correct. That is correct.
Are you planning on using the same questions that you used for the full-time? Or are you looking at changing that? And if you are looking at changing the questions, when are you looking at changing them? Because it's not something, you can violate the open meeting law by communicating with each other. I think this question should be done, that. So again, if, if you already have valid questions that work for you, and I, I have not seen them. But if you have questions that work for you, then I would suggest you operate with those same questions. They were for a full-time chief, this is for an interim chief. It doesn't, they're, the duties are primarily the same. But if you were gonna change it, then I would suggest you either schedule another meeting tonight or we, we get a copy of that and work through those questions now because otherwise you're gonna have to have another discussion.
So on those, those questions, since we can't, uh, talk about them as a council for that being an open session, I mean, you have the questions, they either be out there in the open for all the candidates to see, or the committee would have to come up with questions.
If you guys are doing it by city council, then arguably, yes. People could have an advantage if they went and watched your video. If you were doing it by committee, maybe it's the committee that is gonna vet or, or screen for more candidates, then arguably, you would not be violating the open meeting law to have those people put the questions together. But somebody, if you're gonna change the questions, somebody needs to do that. And you either do it in an open session as a group, or you delegate that task to one of your committees.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Brian.
I think the Hiring Committee should be able to, to work with staff to come up with the questions that are applicable to the interview.
All right. So we'll have Hiring Committee work with staff on questions. If there's a two-stage process here, we'll come up with two sets of questions. If there's a single stage, we'll come up with a list for the council.
And when would a anticipated final decision? Are you, are you looking at that sometime after the 17th? Are you looking at talking about it at the meeting, after, you're interviewing people on the 17th? When are you making a final decision?
My recommendation would be on the 17th. Does council's thinking?
Yes. That should be able to work.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Raydell.
Would the same hold true that on October 7th, if we've got three or less candidates, we'd make the decision on October 7th?
Make what decision?
If there are three or, so I have that, if it's the 7th, if there's three or less, it comes to the city council. So on that day, are we making a decision?
I had, I had different notes. I had October 7th, application deadline closes. So all of you have the applications to be in.
You're right, I had it wrong, okay, all right, sorry. My apologies.
And I think you are gonna try and do a much faster next meeting, but life got in the way.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Natalie.
You wanna make sure of the action item, correct? The Hiring Committee will work with staff to come up with the questions and bring them on the 17th.
If there's more than three candidates, there'll be a set of questions prior to that to screen down to finalist. If there's not, then they will have that for the council, available to the council to use on the 17th.
Thank you.
Anything else? Bob, you got anything else?
I do not. I think I understand. And if I don't, I'd like the council's permission to clarify with Scott tomorrow. And if necessary, we can get ahold of, of the mayor to make sure that we've got the process done. Is that acceptable?
Yep.
So I'll put this stuff together first thing in the morning and get this over to Scott and let him review it, vet it, and then, in addition, where are you presenting this information? Are you gonna put it on the league bulletin? Are you going to just put it on your website? Where, how, how are you gonna get the word out there to the community that these, this position is open and trying to attract the best quality candidate?
Typically, we do on the website and the league. And the league typically sends it out to other sources that they have.
And can the league do all of that in a, basically, assuming tomorrow, you know, sometime tomorrow it goes live, goes on the, the website, gets sent to the league, can they get this disseminated to all likely candidates? And they have a chance to reply by October 7th?
Well, their recommendation was three days.
They get it up quick. They do? Okay, I just, I'm just not into that level of detail.
Yeah, they get it up quick.
Okay.
And then we'll take care of getting it on the website right away.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Raydell.
So we said that the league sends it to other sources. Are those other sources, do they include our professional firefighter, firefighters organizations, chiefs associations and things?
I, I can only assume, I do not know.
We need to make sure that those are included in it.
Anything else? All right? All right, seeing and hearing none? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
I'm sorry, did you make a motion to?
No. This need to be done in an official motion and a vote?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, is that what you asked?
So...
So yes, I would take a motion to post the job description and the opening.
With the modifications as discussed today?
And, and to hit the timeframes that we're talking about, end of day, October 7th, and interviews on the 17th, final interviews. That's the motion, we have a second.
Second.
Any other discussion? Anything else count on that? All right, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. I'll take that motion to adjourn. No moved. All right, second to that, we are adjourned.
Mayor, will you hit the button, please?